Just a minute. Are both recordings going? Are both recordings going? And it's being recorded to the cloud on the other. Okay.
Yeah.
We are ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the December 11, 2023 meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will note that the board did meet an executive session where we discussed the following matters. Litigation matters specifically related to zoning hearing cases at 317 Earl's Lane, 4533 Florida Avenue, 3718 Greedyville Road, 125 Baron Road, 3609 Winding Way, Zero Hickory and Ellis Avenue, the Corey matter. We also did discuss one personnel matter related to heart and lung. And with that, Mr. Neese, I just could please call the roll.
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Chanless.
Here.
Your Solicitor, Engineer, and Manager here.
Perfect. Now move down to a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now move down to Section 5, Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 6, Public Comment for Agenda Items Only. If there's any members of the public who have anything that they wish to say that's related to an agenda item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I will note that for anything related to the settlement discussion, which is Item 14.3, I ask you to keep your comments until that, but until that item. And for 15.1, we are actually going to be continuing that, but I'll make that when we get on to the actual record.
Paul Selleckson, 4727 West Chester Pike, Ashley Mill, Hallway Lane now. And I'm coming to you as the Chairman of Newtown Square and Bloom. I'm unable to decide, this is for 9.1, the budget. I'm unable to figure out what part is EAC and what part is American Bloom. And the reason I sort of need to know that, because if we are joining American Bloom, that means having two judges come to Newtown Square and go through, I sort of have to know that soon so that I sign us up and get us. There is a slight discount if we do it early rather than late. So I'm just asking for a clarification on the EAC budget. It includes American Bloom, but I can't see how much is it? Is there $1,300?
Mr. Neese, if you want to answer that.
I'm gonna have to go back and pull exactly what was in there. I know there was some money that you requested, Paul, but I don't think it was the whole amount. So let me go back. I don't have it right in front of me tonight. But if you'll get with me tomorrow, I'll give you the exact dollar amount of what the American Bloom is.
Any other members of the public? Okay. Well, now move down to Section 7 Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November 27, 2023 meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 8, Resolutions of Recognition, which is why we have a packed house this evening. 8.1, Consider Approving Resolution 2023-38, Recognizing Ed Partridge's Years of Service. Supervisor Roberts.
Chairman, I'd like to present a resolution number 2023-38, Recognizing Edward "Ed" Partridge for his service to Newtown Township. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township wishes to recognize and thank Ed Partridge for his 20 years of service to the residents of Newtown Township, insisting of seven years as a member of the Marple Newtown School Board, where he served two years as President of the School Board and 13 years as a Township Supervisor, including four years as Vice Chair of the Board. And whereas Ed served faithfully and professionally, supported and advanced the mission of the township, and was a dedicated stalwart for financial responsibility, preserving the community's resources, and promoting the best interests of the township and its residents. And whereas Ed was a tireless advocate for the adoption of the 2016 Township Public Sewer Plan to provide public sewer to the majority of properties in the western half of the township, and served with passion and diligence as liaison to the Township Municipal Authority during the plan's rollout. And whereas Ed served with passion and diligence as a liaison to the Newtown Township Police Department and was instrumental in the Police Department achieving the highly coveted accreditations by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission and Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Certification. Whereas Ed served with passion and diligence as a liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission and was instrumental in the protection and improvement of numerous township parks and improvement of recreation authority opportunities for the township residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Newtown Township that Ed Partridge is hereby recognized and thanked for his 20 years of dedicated and exceptional service to Newtown Township community, adopted this 11th day of December 2023. That is my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Supervisor Russo. And now we'll move to the roast section of this. We'll move to Board Comment. So if any members of the board have anything they want to.
Well, Ed, you and I have served on this board. This is my 10th year. And I just want to say that it's been a pleasure and it's been an honor to serve with you. I think that with your, you're a strong leader and you're very passionate about your family and this township. And we really, really appreciate you and you will be missed. So thank you.
Ed, I want to thank you just, I can't hear, I guess, a few years after you. And I enjoyed working and talking and your leadership on the financial matters are far and above what I could ever do. And I really appreciate you and all that guidance. Best of luck with you and your family.
Stop in around budget time.
Yeah. The only, I have a few thoughts. So I have had the opportunity of knowing Ed before I got on this board from his son Kevin being friends with my good friend's older brother, right? So that's how I first came to know Ed Partridge. He actually was one of the individuals who gave me my diploma when I graduated from the prestigious Marple Newtown High School as well. But I really got to know Ed in 2011 when I was recruited to join his primary campaign for Township Supervisor. And just as I said two weeks ago with Doug Everloff, what has been fun in this role had been seeing you or having had the opportunity to help you get elected and then serve with you over the last four years. It's kind of been like a full circle, full circle moment. What I've always liked about Ed is a couple of things, but most importantly, he always made me look like the short talker. Because as we know, he can go on and go on. And he started this position with a head of hair just as dark and thick as mine, and he's still got the thickness, but now it's just changing a little bit. And he's only a few years older than me. I don't understand. That's the crazy thing about it. But the thing that's remarkable is after 20 years, you know, we up here as supervisors, we do this because we enjoy it and we want to see the future of the township move forward. And we spend a lot of time achieving those goals of moving the township forward. But where we also have to acknowledge is the family members. For 20 years, Ed has been a pillar in this community. For 20 years, he's been a leader in this community. Seven years on the school board, two years as President, 13 years here, four years as Vice Chair. And you know, there were a lot of times where it would have been a sacrifice where he, you know, might have missed something with the kids or the grandkids. And so I want to say thank you to Ed, but more to the family with your late wife Kate, with your new wife Maria Therese and your family. As much as we are thankful for you to have served this board, we thank your family for allowing you to be with us as well. So enjoy, enjoy the greener pastors, Ed. Enjoy the greener pastors.
Thanks.
Now remember, I said you make me quick. So yeah, that's not prolonging too long.
Excellent.
Um. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And before we go for that picture, we also have a resolution from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. And I'll read it. This certificate of service is hereby presented to Edward C. Partridge in recognition of your 13 years as a Township Supervisor for Newtown Township Delaware County. We commend you for your selfless dedication to your community and local government, as well as your leadership, commitment, and passion for serving your fellow citizens. Presented by the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. And it's signed by the President and the Executive Director. We should take a picture now with you and all your goodness. I should also note too, we have a plaque for you in addition to the other plaques. So you're gonna have a lot of things to hold when you get in this picture. So we'll give that to you and.
Okay. All right, well. Certainly appreciate all the kind words from the board members and appreciate the family being here. As far as age, I got it correct. Len was 10 years old when he started helping me with the campaign. But you know, I just want to, you know, thank the board, the administration, Rich, or and the administration who are, you know, their companionship and collaboration over the years. It's been an honor to to serve. And I think, you know, what makes Newtown a great place to live and to work and raise a family is really, you know, not just the board. Certainly the board participates, but the administration, Steve, Rich, Eric, you know, legal, engineering, all the department members, not here tonight, but you know, Chris Lund, our Chief of Police, George Sharitz, Director of Public Works, Yvonne, our Director of Finance, Andy Reschek, our Code Enforcement, and you know, all the people that work for them. Steve Neese, especially, he's the guy that pulls it all together and makes it happen day to day. So I just want to say that, you know, my wife and I, you know, decided when we downsized that we would continue to stay in Newtown. We thought about it and it was an easy decision. And the reason why is just that all these folks that work so hard make it what it is, and it is the best, best community to be part of. And I'm proud to have served and, you know, want to thank, you know, everyone for, you know, for that privilege. Thanks.
All right. Tom, if you want, we'll go on the record. So I will note that the Item 15.1, zoning change for 4031 West Chester Pike and the subsequent agenda item 17.1, ordinance 2023-03, zoning map change for 4031 West Chester Pike is going to be continued. We have not received yet the Delaware County Planning Commission Review Letter, and we will not be proceeding until we receive that. So this hearing will be continued. And I'll state it for, on the record, to the January 8, 2024 meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. And.
January 8, 2024. And then we'll continue the hearing until then. So we're not going to re-advertise.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Now, Tom, how come you always, Tom, you always pick us up saying things on the record and you always shut yours off before you say that? I don't understand that. I just don't get how that works, Tom.
We got you on tape, Tom.
Now we'll move down to Presentations. 9.1, Presentation for the Budget. Mr. Neese.
Pick up the one changes in the 2024 budget since advertised. No, but not one, please. The next one up. So if you'll recall, on, I believe it was November 13, we had a full budget presentation. I am going to spend very little time going through what we went through on November 13. I'm going to focus on what the changes were between then and now, so you know all of the changes. So the first thing that I'd like to cover with you, if we could go down two slides, I believe it is. Yeah, right to there. Thank you. I want to talk about the differences in the budget that we have. And so I want to talk about why there's differences and then focus on that and then go from there. So the first thing, if you'll see that in real estate taxes, we actually dropped $73,000, almost $74,000. That's because the county came back in with their assessment value. And when they did, that drove for us that we were actually going to have less real estate tax revenue based on their assessment value that came in. With that, I went back and also looked at the percentage of collection. In the past, we've budgeted to collect about 98 to 99, 98 and a half. I actually budgeted for 99% collection rate for next year. So if everybody in town will continue to keep doing their, they're paying their taxes in a timely manner, that'll work and we'll be able to do that and we'll be able to keep at that number that we had projected. There was some, under the business license, I took a look, there was a little bit of dollars there that we could pick up. Most of that was in relationship to business licenses that we came in over the last month. Fines were down a little bit. We're not getting quite as much from a couple of the state level where we get our fines. Interest rates, because you had given us permission to invest, Yvonne and I were able to go out and extend some of our investments. I believe that we can keep, I believe we can increase another $19,000 on our, on our interest rates. Under straight revenue grants, we got, the number that we had been budgeting was in about the $20,000 range. And we had kind of stayed at that spot for a period of time. I believe that based on what the state has said that we're going to get is closer to 40. And we had already kind of picked up and budgeted a little bit more. I increased that 20% so that I would still be in line with what we were allowed to do over across the board with our revenue. Under other financing sources, I want to talk about that one. And if you would, please drop down three slides, I believe it is. Yes, that's the one. Thank you. I want to talk about this just because it was something that came out of the Municipal Authority meeting since we advertised the budget. The Municipal Authority is considering requesting the township hire additional staff. The additional staff person, just so everybody understands real clearly, currently the township's staff functions as the staff for the Municipal Authority. We have an agreement that the solicitors from both organizations had worked on together. And we have a disagreement that basically says the staff will provide, or the township will provide staff for the Municipal Authority functions. The Municipal Authority was asking for some more staff or a single staff that was kind of dedicated to their service. And so upon doing that, we looked at the position and we said that it would eventually take over responsibilities in administration, finance, codes, and public works. And so we put together a full job description, what that would look like. That position is going to all in probably cost somewhere around $128,000, $130,000. The but they're not. But what we can, what happens now, see if I can get this, say this clearly enough because it's kind of confusing. But what happens now is the Municipal Authority is paying for the services of some of my time, some of Yvonne's time, some of George's time, some of some clerical time from a couple of different departments. They also have, we have one employee who's almost all Municipal Authority right now. And so we have that. And so they reimburse us. I forget the exact amount, but I think it's somewhere in the, close to the $200,000 range right now for the services we provide. This position would come in and pick up a lot of those responsibilities, but the position that's currently almost full-time Municipal Authority is going to stay. It's a clerical position. It does all the utility billing. That's going to stay. And that's going to continue. I figure for the first year, most of the time that I spend on Municipal Authority will continue at what I'm doing because I'll be training this person and getting them up to speed. Where we'll see some savings, I see some savings for the township side in the, and this is in the time, not in dollars, but in the time. Yvonne will be doing a little less on the finance side. This person will pick up doing some of the budgeting and some of the monthly reporting. This person will pick up some of the in-the-field stuff and working and kind of knowing what's going on. So what George does on a weekly basis for the Municipal Authority, that will go away. Not 100%, but quite a bit of it. Harry's work will still probably stay. And so anyway, all of that figuring, I figured that when we did all the calculation, there's about $128,000 in expenses. And the Municipal Authority is going to contribute an additional $85,000 to you. So it's not 100% match, even though they're taking 100% of this person. It's because you've already got people who are doing work and we had to balance that. And so you'll see that there's $85,000 here, but when we get down to the expenses, you're going to see that there's expenses that are greater than the 85, and that's the reason for the difference. If I can go back, those two slides or one, two, three slides, that one, thank you. I want to finish up. I did look at under public safety. There are a couple more developments, potential land development projects that are going to come in. We know of a couple that are commercial that are going to be coming in in 2024 that I was not aware of at the time we put the budget together. So we've gone back and added those in. The highway and streets, that money is what the state has paid us related to our contribution for winter storms. And so a total adjustment of $143,000 in revenue is what we're looking at. So the ups and downs that you see there, it's 140. If we can now, we're going to jump down. I think it's about four pages. All of this documentation in further, go one more page down, please. All this documentation regarding all the revenues I talked about, I tried to explain it in the document that's there, that's available for the public, it's available for the board. The next two pages you'll see was again, the 2024 proposed expenses and then the amended expenses since we met. And so the first place where I want to talk about, if you go down two more, thank you, that one. You'll see that there was 57,000 in administration and 71,000 in finance. This position that we would hire is going to be split between those two positions this year because it's picking up administrative work as well as picking up mostly finance work. There's some in codes, there's some in, 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 in public works, but we focused primarily on administration and finance because that's where the majority of that is. So that I think works out to about $128,000. And that's, you know, assuming we got somebody started in January. I don't think we'll get somebody started in January at this point, but that's where that is. And then the only other adjustment that I had was down on the next page. We had talked about this once before, but I don't, I think I actually thought it had come out, but it had not. We removed 27,000 out of the snow removal. Then we had snow today and that probably changed everything. But no, seriously, we're anticipating, depending on who, which weather person you talk to, we're either going to get clobbered this year or we're not going to have any. And so what I did is I just looked at really, I went away from the 2022 year where we hit 87,000 and I came back and I looked at the last three or four years before that, and they were all between 50 and 60. And so we budgeted $60,000. And so that's what you have in the budget for that. So that was, ended up being an increase in expenses of 101,000. And I talked through what those expenses are. If you will drop down to one, I think it's two screens down, please, right there. So if you'll recall, on 11/13, we had $468,000 worth, almost $469,000 difference between revenue and expenses. It says finance, but it's expenses. That's my fault. And then the gap between revenue and expenses for today is now down to 426,000. Because of the change in, in real estate tax collection, I think we were talking about picking up about $64,000 for each 1% of increase in revenue, I mean, increase in taxes, real estate taxes. Because of the change from the county, it actually worked out to be about $63,654. You all had kind of said it when you were looking at doing this at the last meeting. You had voted to say, we would consider a 4.5% tax increase. 4.5% tax increase would bring in revenue of 263, or 268,445. With that, that, apologize. That would leave the difference for you, and I believe it's about $160,000. But I will get that number for you in just one second. I thought I had it in front. 158,3452. And that really is the budget presentation for tonight. I know it's further down on the. And that really is the budget presentation for tonight. I know it's further down on the agenda. I didn't know if you wanted to ask any questions now or if you want to deal with it down on the rest later in the agenda.
Any questions from the board?
To Steve. So the gap. Regardless of how we close it, it was four hundred and sixty-eight, nine hundred and forty dollars, right?
It was.
Previous gap.
The previous gap, that's correct.
Okay, and the current gap with, with those changes?
Is four hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven. So we've had a net effect of basically, you know, a plus forty-two thousand since.
That's correct.
Last meeting. You have a.
We're not gonna vote on it right now.
Yeah, I, I didn't know what, I just, this was really kind of meant to be a presentation.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Nice. Section ten reports, reports from the township engineer, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, you have a quick update on two items, the LS Avenue sidewalk. The contractor has completed all the concrete work, including the sidewalk curb and aprons. They currently are working to stabilize the area around the, the concrete and we're continuing to push them to get topsoil and stabilized. For remainder part of the year. As of today, the contractor started installing the storm sewer, starting at Gallagher's Way. They're gonna be working their way back up the road. We're gonna, and then at that point, we're gonna have everything stabilized and then once we can actually. Throw grass in the spring, we'll come back and do the final stabilization. But as of now, the sidewalk is all open, all the concrete work. Perfect. And then for another project, still a little update on the, we've been working on Rear Park. As you're all well aware, the, the last few years, the township had prepared, come up with the master plan for the park. We're currently focusing on how to implement the phase one portion of it, which is focused around the stream realignment, the pond. Modifications, the dam removal and the related trails that go along with that. To date, the survey of the park has been completed, including what delineation of wetlands, identification of bog turles and other. Related features. And we've also been in contact with a few of the budding property owners mainly upstream to see if there's any interaction along that stream. And as we work on the stream stabilization portion of that. We currently are working through the, the fine detail, finer details of how to physically implement this phase one. With the largest item being removing the dam and realigning the stream. The largest design challenge we're trying to figure out now is when you remove that dam, the creek dropped eight feet. Currently it enters the park and where it exited the dam is eight feet difference in elevation. So we're working through how to actually implement. And, and change, change of elevation while also accommodating the pond and all the other features that we would like to have. Along the pond, we have a few different sketches we're working through now and are gonna be meeting with township staff and advancing that process along. With that, we've also. Once we have all this type of documentation in place, the next step is for permitting. Aspect is scheduling a pre-application meeting with the EP. But the scope of this project is, is the nature of moving the stream is gonna have a pretty substantial permitting requirement. Requiring a joint permit with the EP, so. That would kind of be the next step we've gone forward for regulation.
Any questions for the township engineer? All right. Ten point two, report from the township manager, Mr. Nice, do you have anything to add?
Quick thing, I just wanted to. Wanted to confirm with you, I need to advertise for our auditors for twenty twenty-three. So that you can approve that at the, it will end up being the January twenty-second meeting. Cause you have to have a thirty-day notice in the paper. And so that would be the first meeting that would allow for thirty-day notice. Unless there's any objection, I would continue, we would continue to use Mally. I think it would be appropriate as through this changeover. That we've had with the new finance person, they know more, that would help us get through one more year. And then if you want to change, we could change in twenty twenty-five or twenty, for the twenty twenty-four audit.
We're fine with that?
I just have a question. Mr. Nice, did, have we completed our audit for twenty twenty-two?
No, that's not completed. They're still working on that. We have, we're, we have a couple of things we still have to provide. Yvonne and I are trying to pull all that together and get that to them.
And then, because is there a date that we have to have that completed by?
There are dates that we're, we needed to have that done by, yes, but we're working still through it.
Okay. Cause I know it, it affects our bond ratings.
It does.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for the township manager? That it, Mr. Nice?
That's it.
All right, section eleven, fund transfer, eleven point one, can I get a motion to approve the following transfers from the general fund to the capital fund? All were budgeted in twenty twenty-three budget as a transfer. I'm not gonna read them all out, they're all out there as provided. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by supervisor Partridge, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Likecap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Twelve, eleven point two, excuse me, can I get a motion approving the following transfer from the general fund to the streetlight fund? This was, was budgeted in twenty twenty-three budget as a transfer from zero one dash four, three, four, dash, seven, zero, dash, four, nine, two, point, zero, two. Streetlight expense, eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars to cover part of the streetlight operating expenses. Motion is made by supervisor Roberts-Likecap, seconded by supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, can I get a motion approving certificate for payment number four from LB Construction Enterprises? Totalling twenty thousand, three hundred and thirteen thousand for the LS Avenue sidewalk project. Leaving a balance of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and fifty cents as approved by the township engineer. Motion is made by supervisor Roberts-Likecap, seconded by supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen bills, I've reviewed the bills and I'll make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Totalling three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Motion is made by the chair, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Likecap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point two, I will make a motion to approve the bills on EFT register A dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Totalling twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-one cents.
No move, or second.
Motion is made by the chair, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Likecap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Section fourteen, new business, fourteen point one. A motion to, to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Marple Newtown School District, Marple Newtown, Marple Township. And Newtown Township's police departments with Bus Patrol America LLC, as approved by the township solicitor.
Some move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made by supervisor Partridge, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Likecap. Is there any board discussion? What is this?
So the school district is wanting to. Do a, they're wanting to put cameras on their buses. That would record in moment if somebody, if a person drives by the bus while they're unloading. So in other words, I think what, as I understand it, is the flag that says stop would come out on the bus. It would turn on the camera. If a person were to violate the law and go past the school bus when that happens. That would, it would. It would record that. It would then be reviewed by the company that put it on. If they believed it was reasonable, they would send it to our police department. Our police department would review it and determine whether or not a violation actually happened. If the violation happened, they would send it back and said, yes, it would. They would have taken it to court. The, the school bus, the company that's doing this for the school bus or for the school district would take it to court. And, and if they win, when they take it to court, I think the state gets a little bit of money. We get, I think it's twenty-five dollars. The school district and the, and that company have made an agreement. I forget the exact, I think the company gets two-thirds and the school district gets a third.
Did Marple approve it?
My understanding is it's on, Marple is looking at approving it, but I don't know if they've approved it yet.
I think it's a good idea, but the only thing I'll note is I know Rose Tree Media had some sort of technology similar to that. And there's a big inquire, I mean, this is, this is more for the school district to figure out, but there's a big inquire investigation into. People getting, you know, that, that process that you just outlined is exactly what that other software was supposed to do and so people were getting. Tickets in the mail that shouldn't have been getting tickets. So again, that's more of a, of an issue with the school district. So I hope that they did their due diligence on that, but.
It's a, it's a, it's a weird process. It's a new, a newer law that allowed this to happen. And so it's a revenue generator for the company, but it's an enforcement mechanism for the school district. It really, the idea is that people are getting taken to court, getting caught passing these buses. It's a, it's a real safety benefit for.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just hope it's not the same situation that arose, you know, that the inquiry did their investigation on, so.
But there's still a couple of issues for us to work out on the, on the agreement end. So as long as you guys want to go forward with it, we're gonna make sure that the, the written agreement actually provides for. One of the things is that the. If, if the person loses, you gotta refund the money. I'm sorry, if the person wins, but money has to be refunded, so you know, we don't want to have to have any responsibility for refunds or anything like that. There's a few nits that we have to work out, but we'll get there.
So Rich, are you saying that the? The, the, I mean, this mentions the intergovernmental agreement. Are you saying the agreement's not, not finalized yet?
Not a hundred percent finalized. It's the, the structure is there. There's a few little pieces that, that's why you're saying subject to, to my review.
Any other comments from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point two, can I get a motion approving the request from the Marple Newtown School District to reduce the zoning application fee to eight hundred dollars?
Some move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made by supervisor Partridge, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Likecap. Mr. Nice, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is in relations to the, to the Culberson Elementary School for a zoning application related to a, to a fence, correct?
That is correct.
And amend my motion, say Marple Newtown School District, instead of Marple.
I read it as Marple Newtown.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point three, consideration of a settlement agreement regarding a zoning appeal with the owner of Zero Hickory Lane. Okay, so the way that we're gonna do this is I'm gonna have Mr. Nice kind of frame the situation of, of where we are. To give an overview to both the members of the public that are here as well as to the board. After that, I'll call on Mr. McLean to come up and add and supplement if there's anything that he feels that Mr. Sikora, you know, left out. Or that Mr. McLean feels that he needs to add or supplement. We'll then turn it over to you if you have any sort of presentation. Then we'll hear from the members of the public and then the board will, will, will make their decision. And again, we'll afford you the same courtesy if there's anything that you need to add or supplement after Mr. McLean provides that. With that being said, Mr. Sikora, if you want to frame the issue and we'll take it from there.
Sure, this is a zoning appeal, so some time ago, a year, year and a half ago. The owners of this lot known as Zero Hickory, it, it doesn't have a mailing address yet because there's no house there. But it's at the corner of Hickory. If you go look from the front through the back of the property, you'd eventually get to Westchester Pike. And it was on the corner of where if Tennis Avenue continued, where it intersects with Hickory, if it continued past Hickory. Where it's Westchester Pike, it's on that corner of the paper map street that is laid out to become Tennis Avenue. That was never opened and the township's never gonna open, like a forty-foot wide strip. And that property is what they call non-conforming in that the lot was created prior to. Our zoning ordinances, creation of minimum lot sizes for that zoning district. And so even though it's smaller than what we would otherwise allow for a house to be built on. They have rights with respect to that property and to be able to use it reasonably. The title to go before the zoning hearing board, ask for variances to certain dimensional requirements that we have in the zoning code. Meaning if you, you have a forty-foot wide lot and you enforce thirty-five foot combined side yard setbacks. You would only have a five-foot wide house, so that just doesn't work. But there's a process for that landowner to go to the zoning hearing board and ask for those variances. The, the minimum necessary, and there's other factors for the, to obtain a variance. They ask for that relief from those dimensional requirements such that they can build a house. And that's what they ask the zoning hearing board for. One of the issues is always, you know, is, is it, under the zoning cases that what's being asked, the variance request. You know, contrary to the public health, safety and welfare and is it consistent with the character of the neighborhood? That's another requirement. And it's also, is it the minimum relief necessary to achieve what, what's required? And the zoning hearing board focused on a number of, there was, there's a number of. Neighbor complaints about developing this as a residential property. But one of the more consistent themes was, we don't want it to look like a real, like a row house. Without houses on the other side, meaning if, if it's too narrow and tall, it just doesn't look right. It's not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The zoning board. At the time, the, the township was, we didn't participate as opponents to this, but we were there and asked questions as needed. The, the zoning board was concerned that a specific house had not been identified. A type of house. And they said, how can you say whether this is going to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood if you're not committing to a particular type of architecture that we can look at? And so the relief was denied for that basis. The applicant appealed to the court of common pleas. And as it's, as their right to do, that's the way it works. And the township intervened as a party in the case. The zoning board is the, you know, represented by Mr. Osslander. The applicant's represented by Mr. McLean and I'm representing the township. Nobody else intervened in the case, so while there were some opponents at the zoning board level. There's only three parties at the court of common pleas level. And the judge called this for conference and said, you know, this case has been round. If you're gonna, you know, talk about settling this case, do it now. So Mr. McLean and I did, we talked about some settlement ideas. And. He came forth with what he considers to be an answer to the zoning hearing board's concern about a house. That. Is not identified, that's not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So he said, look, here's an architectural rendering of a specific house. I, I consider it like a, a co- modern colonial type looking house. But it requires just a little bit more width, so it actually even be encroach a little further into the setbacks than what we'd originally proposed. But it looks nicer and that was a big concern of the neighbors. So. Mr. McLean said, we'll commit to this architecture if you let us build a house of this size. And then we developed another, a set of other criteria to help mitigate the impact of developing an undersized lot. In the area, which includes. If you were inclined to grant the, the twenty-four foot width house rather than the twenty-foot house. There would only be a ten-foot setback on one side, it would be six foot on the other. So rather than ten and ten, it would be ten and six. So if, if you're, if you're inclined to allow that wider house to have the, that particular style of architecture. That setback. Decrease would be on the paper street side, so it has less impact on anybody. Another of other criteria such as tree replacements, buffering against any, you know, residential area. You know, compliant with township consultant recommendations. So you get your, you know, landscape folks and your tree folks out to make sure that the, the trees and the buffering is, is appropriate. One of the problems that we have on so, smaller lots is a lot of times the, it's tough for the builders. To have all the activities occur on the lot at the same time. And so you start seeing things like materials getting stacked on the street or dumpsters getting on the street. And we said, no, you gotta, you know, stage your construction so that all the construction activities stay on the property, not out bothering the neighbors. That, what, we also have a lot of street problems like, uh. Damage to the street itself from construction equipment going in and out of trucks and onto the property. So they would. Um, especially on these, these streets that are, uh, not necessarily built to township code. So they're going to post a. Security bond to secure any damage to the street in front of that. Well, I mean, if it's, yeah, I mean, the utility folks would, would, you know. They have to, that, like, we're, I'm not speaking for like the electric company or the, or the water company, but. Yeah, including any type, there, there's no stormwater sewer, so to speak, but at this location, but. There's, if, if it's. Right, well, yes. No, it's, it's, it's their project. They have to make sure the street's repaired. They don't have to pave the whole street, but they got to make sure the street. Sorry. That's what this is. Yeah, they're going to secure damage to the, they're going to repair. I mean, the idea is. They're going to repair. Right, they fix everything, they get the money back, but if not, they're saying, look, here's a sign of, uh, you know, security for you that, you know, if, if you somehow didn't. Do that, you know, you can, you can hire somebody to fix it yourself and, and take that money to do it. Uh, so it's a, you know, we, we are not the only party to this. The zoning hearing board is the one. Excuse me, zoning hearing board is the entity that, uh, made the decision. So they have to approve any type of settlement. Uh, but this is from the township's perspective. Like I said, we were not opponents in the underlying zoning hearing. And we intervened just so we could help guide this process. And so this is from the township perspective, the things that. Uh, the township thinks are important and the applicant has addressed those. So, so really the, the big issue is. Are you okay? Well, there's, there's multiple issues. I can't speak for you, but I, I think a big issue for you is, are you okay with? The decreased setback, a little bit wider of a house to make it more architecturally consistent with, uh, other houses in the neighborhood.
Okay. And before we turn it over to Mr. McLean, I just want to just be clear too. You did also send a letter to those who, uh, were. Right, who were entered as party protesters at the zoning hearing board.
The last week, anybody who went to the zoning hearing board and said, hey, I'm against this. We sent them a letter as courtesy saying, hey, this is going to be considered, it's not required by law, but I thought it was a good idea to, uh, uh. You know, let everybody know that this, this would be coming. So we sent that out last Tuesday or Wednesday. And, um. And then, you know, Mr. McLean's here now.
All right, Mr. McLean, if you have anything you want to add, supplement or your presentation, where is yours, sir?
There you go. Um, I'm here with my clients. Um, uh, this started off, uh, with as Mark and Helen McGinley's application. And at the zoning hearing board, I'm Mr. Altair. I know you were present. Uh, uh, they indicated that this was the house they were going to build, you know, as their home. As circumstances have had it really quite honestly, because of the passage of time, they made a different choice. Um, but Mr. McGinley's business partner, Mr. Barkon. Um, decided that this was a great property and he stepped in and he's here this evening with his son Connor. Um, and Connor and his wife Cory have now purchased the property. And they wish to make it their home and start their family here i- in Newtown Square. Um, so as Mrs. Cory said, at the time of the zoning hearing, um, and, and like I said, I don't want to argue my case before you here this evening. But the municipality's planning code sets forth five standards for the grant of a variance. And, uh, I'll readily admit that in most cases, um, when people come before the zoning hearing board, it's sort of like a compromise. The zoning hearing board looks at it and says, geez, I, I think I like it, but it may not meet all the standards. This is actually a case where we believe, um, you know, very significantly that we do meet all the standards, all those five standards that are laid out. The municipality's planning code. Um, when we were here before the zoning hearing board, we did have a couple of ideas about perhaps what the property would look like. But at that point in the process, no architectural style had been identified or no specific rendering was there. Um, and as it turned out, um, uh, that seemed to be the theme that the neighbors, you know, had an issue with. Um, and we recognized that this is a neighborhood that after the installation of sewers became popular to do some infill development. And put some, some houses in there. And our understanding is that perhaps some of the, the houses that had been built. Uh, the architectural style wasn't, um, didn't comport to the rest of the neighborhood. And so the neighbors rightly were concerned about that. So after we appealed this matter and, you know, we began to talk about, um, you know, somehow may it be resolved. Um, one of the, you know, when we went back and looked at the transcript again. And read it, you know, went back and see, saw what the neighbors complained about. Again, the common theme was they didn't want this house to look like a townhouse. They didn't want the taller style house, uh, that was more narrow, uh, that quite honestly would be taller than it would be wide. Um, so we, we discussed it and said, well, what if, um, we were able to come to an architectural style that we could present to the board of supervisors? And to the zoning hearing board, um, that you could look at it and you could agree that. Yeah, you know, that is consistent with the neighborhood. That's not in any way a detriment to the neighborhood. And we would be bound, uh, to that. That seemed to be, you know, an answer to, um, the specific objection that was raised. By the neighbors at the time of the zoning hearing. Um, so that's what we've done. And, uh, Mr. Barkon did a lot of studying, uh, on this. And came back with a design that was a little bit wider, but the idea here is that again, to address, you know, certainly what the neighbors. Were saying, you know, we wanted to make this something that was not a, a taller building than it was wide. Um, so we, uh, we, we looked to add those, those feet on. Um, and I, I think you've probably seen the sketch that has been presented. So you can, you know, make your own judgment, but. I think if you look at the rest of the properties on, uh, uh, on Hickory and, and go up tennis and look at the properties there. I, I believe that this type of, you know, A-frame, A-frame roof semi-colonial is, is consistent. Uh, with the properties that, that are there. I would also remind the supervisors that right next to our property, um, is the Paper Street Tennis Avenue. And you basically have forty feet that is unoccupied there. Um, so the smaller size side yard would be on the Tennis Avenue side, which is not developed and. You know, still remains a paper street, um, for the township. Um, and my understanding is it can't be developed as a street at this point in time because of the passage of time, but. Um, that, that open space basically is there. So you've got that buffer area. If you actually look at. You know, where it is, it appears to be an eighty foot wide strip. And, um, like I said, I think that the, the, the architectural style that has been chosen by Mr. Barkon. You know, meets that. I mean, what you have there right now certainly is not consistent, you know, with the neighborhood. You've got an old. Uh, bus, um, that's parked, uh, on the grass there, um, that, uh, is for the Eagles. Um, certainly, uh, you know, quirky and, you know, the, a neat thing, but, um, you know, it's. You, you, what you've got there right now is other of the neighbors, you know, parking trucks and the Eagles bus, uh, on this lot. Uh, that certainly is not consistent, um, you know, with the appearance of the neighborhood. Uh, so we feel this will, will improve it. Um, we feel that this meets, uh, the concerns. Uh, that were expressed by the neighbor at the zoning hearing. Um, and, uh, we've agreed to the other conditions. Mr. Sikora has proposed in order to protect the neighborhood, in order to protect the residents, in order to protect Hickory Avenue itself. So that, you know, you're insured against, certainly we don't plan on doing any damage, uh, during the construction, but, um, you're, you're insured against that.
All right. Um, what I'll do now, if there's any que- if there's no questions from the board, I'll turn it over to the public. I know there's some neighbors that are here. Any of the neighbors want to come up and provide some public comment? Um, they're more than welcome to do so. Just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
We talk about the house looking like the other.
Mr. Manzi, real quick, just state your name and address for the record.
William Manzi, one eleven Hickory Lane. We talk about the house that's being proposed is now twenty-four feet wide versus twenty feet wide, which it was. And the code enforcement knocked down this, uh. Request for variance. So now it's a wider house, kind of than what we expected. But the other thing I noticed is, um, I believe it's forty feet front to back. All the houses on Hickory Lane. Are maybe twenty-four feet max, front to back. So. This bigger house, front to back, is out of context with the other homes on Hickory Lane. It's two stories high at the front. And there's a pretty good grade on that property. The current homes on Hickory Lane with that grade, the first floor is at grade, uh, at the front. By the time you get to the back of a twenty-four foot house, you have a walkout basement. Because of the slope, you can walk directly out of your basement. So that's an eight foot, let's say that's an eight foot exposure on the back. So you have eight foot for the basement. I don't know how high each one of these floors are. Are they eight, ten feet? All right. So let's just for ducks, say they're, uh, they're ten feet high. You got ten, twenty and an attic, which looks to me like it might be another ten. That's thirty feet at the front. At the back, being forty feet in. You're going to be well above thirty feet. You're going to be maybe forty-three feet high. Which is really not in line with the properties that are there. And I'm not sure I know what the height requirement is for the height limit on new construction. Something tells me it's around twenty-three feet or twenty-seven feet. So I'm, I'm asking the question, how is this house going to comply? We know it's not going to comply with the setbacks of front and or side setbacks. How is it going to comply with the height setback? A variance for the height.
They're going to meet whatever the requirement is for R three, they're not going above that. They're going to stay with the R three. They're not going any higher than what they're, what they're permitted to do under the zoning ordinance.
All right. So let me ask you how you measure that. If the front's, uh, thirty feet high and the rear's forty-three feet high. Do you go halfway down and measure? Do, do we know that? Does anybody know that?
Give an answer. Yeah, Eric.
I just had pulled up, this is the, uh, building height definition of the zoning code is the average, the vertical measurement of a building. From the mean or average level of the ground abutting the building to the highest point in the middle of the roof. So that would be the average grade around. The property, around the building to the middle of the roof. So if you have a sloping property, it's the midpoint.
The sloping property would be the midpoint of the slope. To the top of the roof. Do we know what that dimension is? What's the, um, maximum height? Thirty-five, I think? I think it's thirty-five.
Thirty, R three's zoning district building height is thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five. Well, maybe it'll make. My point being that this house being forty feet, front to rear, is not in context with the rest of the homes. On Hickory Lane. And, um. Would you maybe be able to change the, the home so it's not so deep? All right. So you're saying as long as the rear setback is correct, you can build back to the rear setback? Well, I can't think of anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Sharon Haslett at thirty-two Hickory Lane. Um, I would appreciate it if, um, my address could be corrected. I got, I got this by chance. Redressed to thirty-three Hickory Lane, so it's thirty-two. Thank you. And I want to thank you for sending it to us because we had no idea this was coming up tonight. Um, I guess my concern is when they're coming over closer to the access we have to get to the back of our house. Um, in some spots, it's three to four feet higher than the, the road that we use. And there's big trees along there that are dying, ash trees that need to come out. I'm just wondering how that hill is going to be fixed so that we won't get a, a total roll, roll down of water. And everything, um, that's my concern that it's going to like wash over and down. And I would, I would like to know how it's going to be.
Yeah, thanks, man. One of the specific conditions, uh, this Mr. Sikora had placed there and we've agreed to is that we will comply with the. Township stormwater management ordinances. So as you know, the, the engineer would, your township engineer would have to approve. You know, any design for stormwater management retention. Uh, right now there is no stormwater management, uh, on these lots. Uh, and I doubt there's any stormwater management on your lot. Um, so here there will be, the situation will be improved. There will be stormwater management, um, on the property.
I guess that's my main concern. I really don't feel it's fair to have a twenty-four foot wide house. Um, when you have a forty foot lot, I just feel that's too. Too, that's, that's really too big for there. And the fact that it would still be ten feet from Greg's. Property line and seven from the, I guess, the edge. Would, now would you be taking care of that whole bank area and taking all those trees out, those big ash trees that are dead?
The, um, one of the requirements in the proposed settlement stipulation is that, uh, we preserve, um, whatever trees are practicable. Um, there are trees, I believe, that are dead, that are on the property that need to be removed. And what we've indicated is that we would. Uh, the township has asked that we consult with the township arborist i- in order to determine those trees and, you know, discuss any replacement of any of those trees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the public?
My name's Greg Drouin, one oh six Hickory Lane. I'm the one that owns the bus. Um, the only thing I have to say is I just don't like the fact of being ten foot off my property line. I have, my, my house has met all setbacks when it was built. Why do I have to look at this house next to me, ten foot off of my piece of property? That's. So I don't think it's right for it. That's everything I have to say. I'm totally against it being, my house is the one right next to him.
It might not satisfy, and I understand that, but one of the conditions is that in that ten foot, uh, setback. They have to provide some vegetative buffering in compliance with our township's consultants. So we'll have, you know, a, a, a landscape. Slash arborist type person come out and say, this is the best thing to do here and help buffer that view from you. So it, it. To, to help improve that, that was a condition of the settlement that was agreed to by the applicant. Understanding it might not be enough, but it's.
Well, it's, it's got to be thirty-five feet high. Pretty big to, to cover what I don't want to see. But that's all I want to say. I just don't think it's right to me to have to live here like that. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Hello, my name's John Haslett, I live at thirty-two Hickory Lane.
John, can you give me, I'm sorry, can you just say your last name one more time?
Haslett, H A S L E T T, thirty-two Hickory Lane, same as Sharon. Um, I just, is this a four-story building that's being put in? Three story? Okay, I, I just, I have the drawing of what's supposed to go in and I just. Based on the, um. The drawing here, it's in, inaccurate, I would say, because this is drawn on a flat lot. It's not a flat lot. So if I'm looking at this, I'm assuming the front is at street. So if I'm looking at this, I'm assuming the front is at street level. I'm at the house exactly to the right of this. There's a driveway in between. It doesn't look like an eighty-foot wide lot. It looks like a forty-foot wide lot. Um, and the house to the right, so our roof line is at the same height as the road itself. So our house is below, much below where this house is going to sit. I don't see how this house would fit into. The way the rest of the neighborhood looks if. The height of my house comes up to this. And then there's a three-story building next to me that sits. That much higher up in the air. So that would be my only concern. So I don't believe that it would actually fit in the neighborhood. If it looks like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Connor Barkon, I'm the property owner, zero Hickory Lane. I just wanted to, you know, address the neighbors. I want to tell you that I hear you and I um. Understand your frustrations and your concerns. Um, you know, I think that if I were living in a place for decades and there was going to be this change coming, it would, you know, I would also be concerned. But, you know, um. All I can offer is to be the best neighbor that I can be. Uh, I got married this year, so I tend to move in with my wife. I tend to put up beautiful home. I tend to start a family and uh. I feel very lucky to have found this property and to uh. Become a member of this neighborhood. So. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that have anything? Supervisor Roberts, I can't.
Mr. Shakura, so um, I hear a lot of questions from the neighbors. Um, and I understand that this has to go back if we say. I mean, I'm not sure what our role is in this since it was zoning hearing board and it sounds as though there's more questions. Than answers tonight uh, with regards to elevation change and plans. So how does? What's our, what's our role tonight as a, as a board?
Well, I mean, so what you're doing is approving settlement agreement. With the applicants. And should the zoning hearing board agree with the zoning hearing board? And they, they may or may not accept this. They have to approve this as well. It's a three-party agreement, right? There's three signatures on there. Then the judge has to approve it after that. But. You know, I don't know that there's going to be that much more discussion about elevations and stuff, but I mean. We can certainly let the zoning hearing board know that. They might hear some questions about.
In terms of process, what uh. To Supervisor Roberts, I have a point and to the point that the residents just had. Um. And I don't know, this might be a. Half-part question from Mr. Shakura, half-part question from Mr. McLean, but I guess the first question from Mr. Shakura is, in terms of process. What do we have to act on this first? Or can the zoning hearing board act on this? And then depending on their decision. Then it comes back to us. That, that's the first question. The second one is based off of the questions that were asked, Mr. McLean, with regards to. Grading change and everything. Would there be a different presentation at the zoning hearing board? Um, and you know, site plans? Um, or no?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I thought to respect it. So we would not be going back to the zoning hearing board for a hearing. Um, I, I, I don't wish to have an argument with the neighbors. I mean, but the, you know, from our standpoint, I mean, if you, if you're familiar with that roadway. Um, the, the concern that was expressed by the last resident regarding the elevation change. It simply isn't the case. Yes, his property next door. Is as the property slopes down towards the Westchester Pike area, his property is lower. Um, there are properties on that street that are way up on a hill. Um, there are properties that are down lower. Um, there are properties, if you, I mean, you could pull it up on your phone right now into Google Apps and, and drive down the street. And you can see the difference in elevations there. So this is not, you know, uh, all the other properties on Hickory Avenue or Hickory Lane are, you know, flat. Um, all with one elevation. It just simply is not the case. Uh, but again, that's not, you know, we're not taking testimony. We're not, you know, presenting evidence. Um, this is meant to be a compromise uh, of a claim. Again, uh, you know. Zoning hearing board had their concern. We believe that it fully meets. Um, the requirements of the municipality's planning code. And if a judge were to be forced to rule upon that, that. We believe that he would rule in our favor. And again, I'm my, I'm not here to make my case, you know, before the board. This is something where, hey, we have. Um, you know, agreed to uh, present a specific design. Um, so that the supervisors can see that this is something that isn't conforming with the neighborhood. And I guess the one good thing is I don't hear any. Thing from the neighbors tonight that the design that was submitted is not conformity. Um, and it's not unlike other houses in the neighborhood. Um, and we would agree to all the other conditions um, that Mr. Shakura attached to that. Um. You know, so that is the, the, you know, the, the compromise that we're making as opposed to if a judge just simply rules on it. There is no agreed-upon architectural design. There are no other conditions. I mean, so. It's a, it's a compromise on both e-ends. A single-family home will be allowed to be built here by a judge. I can guarantee you that. Um, uh, whether it's ours or whether it's somebody else's uh, in the future. Um, but um, I think right now this is a, a home that hopefully the supervisors can look at and say. Is a good-looking home, is in conformity with what our standards are in Newtown Square. And it is something that uh, can, you know, that we'll be proud to have there. Um, you've heard Mr. Barkon, he's not a flipper. He's not building this house and he's going to sell it to somebody else. You know, he's newly married and wants to raise a family. You know, in this neighborhood. So um. You have all the motivations in place. You know, for this project, I think.
So the, the, the zoning hearing board has to approve it. Uh, they can deliberate it privately because it's settlement of litigation. But. They have to approve it publicly. So, you know, it would be. You know, public. Vote. And so there, he's correct. They wouldn't reopen the hearings. This wasn't remanded from the court. The zoning board doesn't have jurisdiction over this matter to make any additional. Only the court does, right? The, the court has it. This is just settlement discussion. If, if you approve it, zoning board approves it, then it's got to go to the court for the court's approval. And then it would be fine. So that, there won't be a new hearing, but there will be a public vote.
Yeah, Rich, um, so.
It's like this is.
This design. Would conform with our code with the exception of the setback.
Right, there's, there's a, there's a few, right, it, it, it doesn't meet.
Step back.
Well, there's, there's, there's things that aren't in conformance with our code. That there's nothing that can be done about it, uh, meaning that the lot is. Not big, consistent with our code, but it's a pre-existing lot, so there's really nothing we can do about that. So the, the other. Variances that they're seeking have to do with these setbacks.
Right.
Right, so it's, it's, it's supposed to be. A minimum of. Fifteen on each side. Thirty-five combined, so it's, you know. So it could be, you know, seventeen and a half on each side or, you know, twenty on one, fifteen on the other, but it's, but. There's not, if you do that, right, if you have thirty-five foot. Setbacks on a forty-foot wide lot, you get a five-foot wide house. That doesn't work. So the question always becomes then what's the appropriate size? For the house? What's, what's reasonable? What? Beats the variance criteria? I mean, they can build a smaller house. Yeah, they came in. The request that they made was. Four feet narrower than this house.
What was the objections to that?
There's a look. That, that, there was, there was objections to the look. Uh, I mean, it doesn't affect the height of the house. Doesn't affect the front yard setback or the rear setback, which are all compliant. But the look, if, if it's a narrower looking house, it looks like, more like a townhouse without townhouses on the other sides. But that's, that's it. That's the only thing you're gaining. Uh, by allowing the extra four feet is, hey, this is a house that we, we're committing to.
And. So with this twenty-four.
And I don't know that they can't make another house look that way. It's not, you know, it's not what I did. I'm just saying this is what they've come with and said, we can do this. We can, we'll commit to this if you give us the twenty-four feet.
The twenty-four feet and the width is forty?
Width of the lot is forty feet.
So you're getting ten?
They have, you'd have.
No, no, not the house, the lot, the lot. The lot uh, is forty feet. So. You're talking about um, proposing a setback of ten feet on one side, eight feet on the other, or?
Six.
Or six feet on the other?
Right, against the paper street sign. That's, that's what they're proposing. I mean, that, they, they asked for the twenty-four feet and then township said, well, if township's going to approve that. Keep it further away from the closer house.
Yeah, makes sense.
This is just my thought. I agree. With what you're saying, Mr. McLean. I, I know the case law. I know where this is headed. If we, if the, the, the board does, if, if there's not a settlement, it is likely that a judge will rule on this. And we could get either the conditions that we uh. Have negotiated in this. Or we get something rammed down our throats that the township doesn't necessarily want. With that being said. The original application or the application itself was not heard. Before this board. So I live in that neighborhood. I know the elevation changes. But I don't know it as well as what those members of the zoning hearing board might have heard in the original testimony. I personally would feel more comfortable with having the zoning hearing board. Take their vote. And then come before the board of supervisors. Um. You know, depending on how that outcome comes, that they, if they vote to approve it, then it, then, then. It comes to us. But they're the original hearing officers. They heard the case. They heard the evidence and they heard the testimony.
I, I agree. I, that's why I asked Mr. Shakura. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry that everyone came out tonight, but it, it educated us on this issue. But the fact that the zoning hearing board was the original body that you all um. Uh, appeared, you know, that, that you appeared in front of, I just feel more comfortable if they had. Uh, if, if their decision, then it comes to us, then instead of us kind of giving them the edict that we've approved this or not approved it. Um, so I think it's best if it. If it goes to there and I don't, I'm not an attorney, but I do do zoning. So I'm just surprised that this does, that this came in this um, manner, that it wasn't the other way around.
And I will just say, just so that we're clear, I do think that the house that is proposed is a nice-looking house. And I do think. The conditions that have been negotiated. Protect as much as the residents might not feel right now. I do think that they do protect them. Versus what a court will do unilaterally. And I'm willing to have that conversation with anyone off the record. Or, yeah, outside of this, this meeting of what we can, what the township and you as a neighborhood will get with a set settlement. Versus what a court can unilaterally do. All the things that are built in here that truly do protect that area. And again, it's my neighborhood. I know I don't live next to it, but it's my neighborhood as well. It will protect us as opposed to a judge unilaterally coming down. But with all that being said. Um, I do think, back to my original point, I, I think that. Let the zoning hearing board make their decision and then it comes back to the board.
Twenty-first. We have a regular meeting scheduled here on January eighth. So from a time perspective, it shouldn't make that much of a difference to. Have it considered.
Mr. McLean, do you have anything else? Are you?
We don't have anything further.
Okay.
Obviously, it's your prerogative.
Okay. Alright.
Twenty-first on the hearing board. We'll try to get it on that agenda and then um, we meet January eighth. Uh, we're gonna, I don't know if we've discussed that yet, but I think we're in advertising meeting for January eighth.
Well, I noted it on the record for the other hearing.
Thank you.
So, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move down to fourteen point four. Consider approving a budget increase of four thousand dollars for the purpose of bonuses of four to employees.
So move approved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Robert Psychap. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nease, you want to add or supplement anything to this?
Uh, just that we've had two employees that have taken on additional work this year because of staff shortages and that's what this is for.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to fourteen point five. Consider approving the twenty-twenty-four budget. Um, and uh.
Mr. Chair, before you go, if I could uh. Uh. Make a couple statements. Um. I need to apologize to you. It appears that I've made a mistake. And I want to talk about what the mistake is so, because it impacts. Uh, the budget. I. Believe what I did is I picked up the twenty-twenty-two millage rate, which was one point seven six six one. Uh, instead of the twenty-twenty-three millage rate, which was one point eight eight three five, or I'm sorry, which was one point eight. One one zero. Um. When I run those numbers by changing and putting those into our budget. Uh. That changes what our collection rate would be. Um, and if you can give me one second, I would like to pull up that other spreadsheet before I read to you exactly what it is. So. Originally. I was saying. We were going to. Collect six point four seven four million. In uh. Real, real estate revenue. Um. We will now be collecting six point six three. Eight one. Uh, with doing that. It makes the gap. Two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Almost two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. In order to, okay, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Manzi. Can you guys take the conversation outside? It's, it's getting reverberation. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Nease.
So if you. It with that new, with those new numbers. The. The rate is actually, instead of what I told you of being sixty-three. Uh. Per. Uh. Um. Sixty-three. Uh, thousand. It is closer to sixty. Five thousand. Uh, per. Per, 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 per percent.
Per percent. Yeah, Steve, so just, let's um. Let's do this. Let's start at. The gap of four sixty-eight, nine forty, just so everybody's clear. And then work our way.
Well, if we start back at the gap from the eleven.
No, 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 just, no, the new gap.
Oh, well, that gap.
The new gap is four twenty-six.
Four twenty-six.
Eight oh seven?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just start there. That's new gap and, you know.
Okay.
And then let's work our way back from there.
Okay, so. If we start there and then we make this correction.
Right.
Then it. We pick up additional taxes, which then drops. The gap. To. Two hundred and sixty-four thousand nine seventy-seven.
Two sixty.
Two hundred and sixty-four thousand. Nine seven seven.
So you're saying. You're saying we're picking up a hundred and sixty thousand?
That's correct, because we had approximately a three percent increase last year. And so we're picking up that three percent increase, which I wasn't accounting for.
Okay, so. So the four twenty-six, eight oh seven turns into, without anything, doing anything else, it, it's now. Two sixty-four, nine seventy-seven.
I, two sixty-four, nine seventy-seven. That's correct. I apologize for the.
And then, okay, no, okay, so we're at two sixty-four, nine seventy-seven. We need to close.
Yes, that's correct.
And we can close it either with fund balance or with tax increases or whatever. Okay.
Correct.
That's, so for every percentage increase. In tax. We're going to pick up sixty-five thousand?
Sixty-five. To sixty-five thousand. Two hundred and seventy dollars.
Two hundred and seventy. So what that means, just some quick math, is that. You can, without any additional increase in using fund balance. You could close that gap with a, a four percent increase in millage.
That's, that's correct.
And that, and that would. That would pick it up and with a couple of dollars to spare.
With a couple of dollars to spare. I think it's like two thousand dollars or something like that.
Alright, so let's, you guys. All right, so let's, you guys, so, so remember, just so we're on the same page. So, which, so the public can hear this too, so. So remember, we, we started out with throwing the three seventy-five into the for the fund balance for the one-time expenses, okay, so that's still in there. And then.
Those to cover the pension.
Right, right. And then we were talking about, well, hypothetically, if you had a four, four and a half percent tax increase, it would gain, you would, you would come up with, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, and then the gap was like four hundred and some, so we're talking about using to, you know, hypothetically, a four point five percent tax increase plus two hundred more, two hundred thousand more into the fund balance, right? So now Steve has it down to no, nothing additional into the fund balance. A straight four percent tax increase covers the deficit now, without any addition to using fund balance, just that initial three seventy-five. That's where he's at. So, I mean, I guess the board's decision is.
But there is, but, but there is fund balance that we're using already, correct?
Yeah, the original, one, one time.
The, the original three seventy-five is still in there for using that.
Because.
That was just the pension shortfall.
That was for the pension shortfall and the fifty thousand for tree removal, if you recall, there was fifty thousand, it was three twenty-five. Remember, the pension actually went up four twenty-five? We put a hundred thousand dollars into the budget this year, we said we would try to potentially add another sum amount next year. But we added a hundred thousand this year, and then hopefully by twenty-twenty-five, when they redo the the pension evaluation, we'll be closer to the number, and we won't have to keep putting extra dollars.
Based on the stock market.
Based on, based on the investments, that's correct, whether it's the bonds or whether it's the.
Just so anyone who's just listening to this conversation now, they understand.
That's, that's correct, because, based on the twenty-twenty-one evaluate, uh, based on the twenty-twenty-three evaluation, which was the beginning of this year, and, and just real quick, the stock, when we, when we look at our pensions, we look at it for a moment in time, it's not where, it's not a moving number all the time. But, you know, we have investments in the stock market, we have investments in bonds, we have a few dollars in cash. And so when the stock market went down and at the end of twenty-twenty-three, that happened to be when they took the picture.
Picture, yeah.
And, and so that's the reason why we had that big gap, because before that, we were over a hundred percent funded in both of our pension plans. This dropped both of our pension plans to the low nineties, and so that's the reason for that increase.
Thank you, just so that anyone who just.
No, I think that's good.
To make sure that it wasn't bad investment decisions or anything.
No, 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 it had everything to do with the way the wave of the stock.
Because there was the Penn, the Pennsylvania state employees pension was problem.
Yeah, it's, our pension is still very healthy, even it, even it, in the low nineties, that's considered one, a very highly funded pension.
Okay. And then the trees, because of the ash, because of the ash.
Hey, Steve, so, while these guys are looking at some numbers, uh, did the, did the projected twenty-two-three? I assume in, in the changes that you just, you know, laid out, there was no change in the projection, where the projection is, is more than it was at the last meeting.
It might be a little bit higher, it might be a little bit lower, I don't recall what it was, let me look, see if I can find what it was at the last.
Okay, if you can. So what Steve's doing? So the last question that Steve's looking up now. The.
The projections did not change.
Oh, okay. So then that's here, all, but I just asked him if the picture this year got rosier since our last meeting, and it stayed the same.
At least it didn't get worse, so that's.
Right, right, stayed the same.
What I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask you. Just out, and I don't know if you can crunch this number right now, but the average assessed home, I know some people don't like this metric, I'm just curious.
Uh, I believe we've been saying the average assessed home is five hundred thousand.
Yes, so it's a four percent on five hundred thousand.
Is. Whoops. Sorry. Trying to make sure I'm on the right page before I tell you, I've got. Is thirty-five dollars and six, thirty-six cents?
A year.
That's correct.
A year.
But once we get the resolution, and we read the resolution, I'll then turn it over with any public comment in addition to the board comment. But as we saw the last meeting, this is crunching numbers, democracy in action. Quicker and a little bit more efficient than Congress. Okay, Supervisor Partridge.
Okay. Okay. Resolution, resolution twenty-two-three dash thirty-nine, a resolution of the township of Newtown in the county of Delaware, Commonwealth, Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate, rate for the year twenty-two-four. Be it resolved and enacted, and is hereby levied on all real estate property within the township of Newtown, the tax rate for the general purposes of one point eight eight three five mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of one hundred eighty-eight dollars thirty-five cents on each one hundred thousand of assessed valuation equates to a four percent increase in milage. The assessment for fire hydrant is point zero three two five mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of three dollars twenty-five cents on each one hundred thousand of assessed valuation, whether or not the property is exempt from taxation. The assessment for streetlights is point zero three five two mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of three dollars fifty-two cents on each one hundred thousand of assessed valuation, if located in a streetlight district, whether or not the property is exempt from taxation. Adopted this eleventh day of December twenty-two-three, and that's my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion?
Yeah, just a, just a request for a roll, roll call vote.
Any other comments from the board? All right, any comments from the audience? Okay. The only thing I'll add is, it is never easy when we have to make a decision that is an increase in taxes. But we do have the responsibility to ensure that we're in a strong budgetary process, or strong budgetary position, thank you, heading into the next year. I think that while this is an increase, it equates, as we just said, and I know some people don't like this metric, the average assessed home, thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cents a year, or two dollars and ninety-five cents a month, to continue to provide the high-quality level of services that we have here in the township, while also ensuring that those services are not cut to a point where they can't be provided, as well as ensuring that we're in a position of strong financial footing for the next year. Any other board comment? Mr. Neese, please call the roll.
Roll call vote.
Do you need to say something?
No, we're, so we're good, we're, we're, we're just, before we move on, just remind me, we have to do one thing. All right, Ms. Roberts-Like, huh?
Yes.
Mr. Partridge?
No.
Mr. Russo? Ms. Chalice?
Yes.
Mr. Altieri?
Yes.
It would be four to one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese.
So, Mr. Chair, before you go forward, we need, I need you to step back and, and approve the budget as presented, because we've actually approved the milage, but we haven't approved the budget, so if you could please step back, is approve the budget as as amended, as I amended it after a presentation.
Okay, so we just did, just for my record, that was sixteen point one essentially, the military?
That is correct.
Okay. And just out of okay, that, that's fine, I'm, I'm, I only paused because this has a different resolution number, but I think it's because we.
Because we took two off for the.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, so we did sixteen point one. So we need to do fourteen point five, can I get a motion to approve the twenty-two-four budget as amended?
No move.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Like, seconded by Supervisor Partridge, is there any board discussion?
Yes. So.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kath.
Yeah, I just, Steve, I, I just had one clarification, so we're approving the budget, but there were some things in there that were sort of general that we haven't specifically approved yet, and, you know, like, a small example that I'm thinking of is the the permanent speed bumps, right? There was an amount in there for that, but it was vague, like, you, you had some amounts in there that, that we had really allotted to any particular areas, so my question is, we're approving this tonight, that doesn't mean that we're all of those projects are approved without us specifically going back and talking about them, right?
Well, and like any capital project in particular, very rarely can we go forward without going out to bid. And so all of that would come back before you, you would not only approve going out to bid, but you would also approve the bid once it came back, so you would have, particularly on all the capital projects. But I also know there are a couple that we may not go out to bid on, that we would bring back before you, before we took action.
Okay, so, my question.
Supervisor Chance, did you hear that?
I did, yes, I did.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
I do not.
Good.
All right, so this vote on the budget does not take into account the milage increase, or it does?
It does.
It does.
Well, I mean, in that you had said, I, I mean, I'm taking it that you had said you're gonna agree to cover you were covering the gap between the, the.
Right, right, this, this, this include, this vote includes covering the gap, okay.
That is correct.
I just wanted to clarify that. So I'll ask for a roll call vote again.
Mr. Neese?
And on, I'm sorry, on approving the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this will be, we're voting on fourteen point five, we're voting on it in. Okay.
Yeah, you can, no, I meant, you can continue, sorry.
You ready for me? Okay, Mr. Partridge?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Chalice?
Yes.
Mr. Altieri?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts-Like?
Yes.
Again, that passed four to one.
All right, now fourteen point six, can I get a motion to approve the committed and unassigned, excuse me, the committed and assigned fund balance as stated in the attached memo from the township manager?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Like, is there any board discussion? Good?
Yep.
Supervisor Chalice, do you have anything you want to add?
I do not.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we did the public hearing, resolutions, we'll now move down to board comment.
So I just want to make a comment, um, earlier, you know, I talked about the the folks that worked to get, that I worked together with in the township, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, just omitted, you know, a very important person, so I just want to mention Suzanne Valanen, the administrative services director, and the significant accomplishments that, that she does, that that makes the township run and operate efficiently, so I just want to get that on the record, and again, you know, I appreciate you know, working with the board over the past thirteen years in the administration, and good luck, and God bless.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. Any other board comment? Any public comment? Okay, this meeting's adjourned, thank you, everyone.